All the contact information for all the administrators in the school system, followed by the board's mission, goals, and the six budget priorities that the board had approved in the fall as well. The next page is actually a new page, District at a glance, thanks to Mr. Procaro putting this together. And you can see the numbers and the enrollment going on pre-K as it's risen up. Oh, yours is not next? It's a single sheet. Oh, yours is after that. Oh, sorry about that. Then I will go with your organization. Mine was Paul. There we go. Next is the capital plan. We've never included that before. We thought that that would be a good context for board members to have what the plans are, what we're doing this year. We actually, you can see it's down to two pages. It was probably five pages three years ago. So we really have been getting a lot accomplished in the school system with the TPW on many of these items. So that's the capital plan. That does need to be submitted to the town and the board will be approving that at your next meeting on 26th of January for the submission to the town. Is the next one the district at a glance? No. The next one is the revenue. Erin, there's actually another binder right on the table outside. I'm sorry to interrupt. I noticed he was looking at his own. Thank you. Revenue estimates, the town does ask each year what, last year and this year anyway, what estimates we have for the revenue. It does not, the board doesn't have revenue. This is revenue that comes to the town, but much of it is specific to education and so, oh, the binders are gone, I'm sorry. And so we wanted to give them an accurate suggestion of what those would be, estimation of what those would be. So that's, and we can certainly, we'll go through all of those details and answer questions to those as well. So is the next one district at a glance? There it is. So this, the next page is district at a glance. You can see that there's just some information in there that we thought would be helpful to the board, pre-K, enrollment going from 37 in 2003 up to 182 students now. That is threes and fours, not just fours. So it does cover two years' time. We are required to provide an education, an early childhood education to our threes and fours if they have been identified as having special needs prior to that. And so we not only educate those students, but many others as space is available. You can see the elementary, middle, and high, and the total enrollments as they have changed over the last 13 years or 12 years, excuse me. So student enrollment, you can see the visual, the bar, the graph has gone down, but students eligible for free and reduced meals has certainly risen in the same amount of time. We're now at 43% across the district. And that represents quite a range in our schools. The elementaries are much higher than the middle and high school. I'm not sure what the reason is for that. It could be that middle and high school students are a little reticent to have themselves identified, but that's, we're hoping that's not the case. We have nine schools or programs, six elementary schools. That would include our Loveland Hill School as one of our elementary schools, one middle, one high. And then next step is our other program. Next Step works out of the West Main Learning Center. Our total enrollment, you can see the ethnicity that our district has across it. We are a diverse district. Students receiving special types of services, limited English proficiency, so English language learners, free and reduced lunch, special education. I will tell you, the average in the state is around 12. So we are high on the special education side. And I think our highest is, if I'm correct, is, or our higher percentage in the state average is autism. The attendance rate, you can see for the different, that would be last year's rate for all of those students. So in looking at the rest of the binder, and I know you've all heard this part before, we have three levels. And under the budget summary, you have your highest level, the space shop level or spaceship level. And that just shows the eight accounts and how they've gone up or down dollar-wise and percentage of the entire budget. And immediately following that, there are eight pages that take each of those accounts and break them down. And so you can see how those are broken down across the district. So this is an aggregate of the district. And if you look at a certain line item and you want to go further, you would then look in the locations. And so we have all the locations, the elementary schools, middle, high, central office, pupil personnel maintenance. Loveland Hill has their own budget tab as well. Adult Ed is behind the central office. And Next Step should be behind the pupil personnel office. And so you would look first in the location for the Goldenrod Sheet, which is attached or connected with the other Goldenrod Sheets we just looked at. Find that line there and then go into the white pages, which gives you the true detail. So while the Goldenrod Sheet may say teachers have lined salaries have gone up by $15,000, if you actually go into that line in the white pages, you'll see exactly where that $15,000 resides. So that is an overview of the binder. I know you've had the weekend and a couple of extra days to review that binder, but I think I. While they are getting us back up and running, board members, you do have a copy of the presentation. It's organized exactly the way last year's was organized. We talk about the board's, this is the, Mark Lina is the chair of our Budget Steering and Finance Committee. As you all know, Mrs. Fisher is the chairperson of the board. The mission and goals of the Board of Education have not changed for four years. And I'm hoping that the board will engage in a conversation over the next year about the goals and maybe a little bit of refocusing. This is the budget in a nutshell, the one line, the shorter than elevator speech between two floors as opposed to four. And so the increase that I am proposing, so this is the superintendent's budget, is $2,766,859 or 5.39%. That is a significant increase, but there are significant changes as well in the budget. I thought this slide was interesting. If you look at the left-hand column, that is the proposed budget. If you look at the right-hand column, that is our current budget. So across the top, you have percent of budget, those eight categories, those eight areas that we were looking at, salaries, benefits, et cetera. And you can see that in 1415 and 1516, the percent of the budget is pretty much the same. So that's if you take the whole 54 million and divide it up percentage-wise, you really do get about the same amounts. But if you look at the percent of increase, I found this very interesting. If you look at 1415 budget, you can see that salaries and benefits, the two larger areas on the right, are, they're pretty close, 72%, 67%, so almost equal. But if you look at the 1516 budget, the percent of increase, this is the dollar percent. So the percent of the dollars for benefits is 47% as opposed to 24%. That's percent of the increase. Now, mind you, there are decreases too, and that's why it doesn't add up to 100%. So, and the decreases show as positive on the pie charts. So rather than pull things out that were negative, last year there were four areas that were negative. And so that affects all of the percents. But the, so the salaries and benefits, I thought for this year were absolutely fascinating, that the dollars in benefits is much higher than the salaries this year. The board had six priorities. The first priority was funding all-day kindergarten. This is the last year of moving this into the local budget. I congratulate the board on their fortitude for making sure that this continued on. As I said, these are the last two schools, Skinner Road and Lake Street. And then the board will be, all-day kindergarten will be fully funded in the local Board of Education. And that, I know, has been a very well-articulated goal for the board for many years. And so I congratulate you on that. Sustaining the Alliance District Initiatives, I shared with you in December the list of positions that we would like to move. This is not the whole group at the beginning. Obviously, we would love to do that, but we did not. We're moving the point to social worker. You can see at Center Road School, these are all different people, so we put the exact dollar amounts in them. These amounts are in the budget. What we did not include that was in our original list was the truancy residency counselor. That person would still be paid out of the Alliance Grant. And one of our academic coaches, we were hoping to move in, and we did not do that either, based on our numbers. And that will still be paid by the Alliance Grant. Curriculum development, last year there was a little bit of a bump in the writing, which is the first line there. That was reduced a little bit. You know, last year we had lots of writing over the summer and other times when teachers were not working in schools. And Mr. Burton has been very successful in getting that done. I know the curriculum committee meets tomorrow night, and our office is filled with the documents that are completed. And it will be quite a read, but we're very, very pleased and delighted at the work that our teachers have done under Mr. Burton's leadership and under Mrs. Vidjitaker and Mr. Testa's leadership as well. Technology, this was support of the five-year replacement plan. We have had $71,000-plus in our budget for, this is the third year that I'm proposing that amount of money. You heard about the five-year replacement plan. That was requested by the council so that, we did have a plan going forward and people would know that they could expect a certain amount for technology each year. We are presenting that to the council on the 20th of January, by the way. So we left in our budget the $71,000 replacement plan, certainly to continue that on. That was for teacher replacements. The software licensing and Vernon Data Processing Center went $155,000. The Vernon Data Processing Center, $119,000 all by itself. You'll see that number in a little while as well. Back to the five-year replacement plan, as I will share with the council on the 20th. This first year of the five-year replacement plan, so 1516, approximately $163,000 was suggested to be able to begin that replacement. We have been very fortunate to be offered an opportunity to apply for a brand-new technology grant from the state of Connecticut that is focused on both accessing the Common Core and assessing the Common Core. And so we are looking at additional Chromebooks, replacements, whatever we need, and also at possibility of wireless at the elementary schools. And if not there, then we're looking at wireless in the Alliance District Grant. So we feel that between those two grants, the Alliance Grant and the technology grant from the state, which does have a $10 million pot of funding, that we will be able to fund the full year, the full first year of the five-year replacement plan. So I'll be delighted to share that with the council in two weeks. Communication, there is no single line for communication. We have communication funding in the Title I Grant, in the IDEA Grant. In our software, both the Aspen, the Munis, there are a lot of areas for that. Aspen, we have started the parent portals at the middle school and the high school. And the teachers will be trained, actually, the technology coaches in each building, a teacher takes on that role in addition to their own role, will be trained in the pages. Each teacher has a page set up for them, like a webpage, and for communication with parents that they will be updating at least once a week. Those people will be trained before the end of the month, and then we expect to roll it out to teachers shortly thereafter. So we did not put an extra line in for communication, but there are areas where we feel that we're going to be able to meet that goal within grants and the other line items. The last priority the board had was a full-time director of pupil personnel and a full-time director of talent management. So you know that right now we have a full-time director of human resources. Mrs. Buell has half of her job directing, excuse me, personnel, half of her job is directing human resources. The other half of her job is directing pupil personnel, which is special education and related services such as the nurses, the guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, occupational therapists, et cetera. Director of Talent Management, this is a title that the State Department uses, and it's much more than HR. We have a person doing some HR work for us, but talent management is the recruitment, the retainment, the development of teachers and certified staff. So it wouldn't only be certified staff, obviously, but these are areas that are above and beyond what an HR director would do. And so we would call that position the Director of Talent Management. And there are many districts across the state that are using the same. I will tell you that the Director of Talent Management, because they would be involved in confidential information, that position would not be in the Association, the Administrators' Association. However, the Director of Pupil Personnel position will go back into the Association, just as an aside. So the first of those eight categories is salary and wages. And so staffing, obviously, is what we would have. Retirements, we do have three retirements. I do expect from two of those retirements, which will be replaced, that we will have a savings of about $53,000, almost $54,000. At the high school, the reductions are .6 art, that is a current position, a full-time family and consumer science position, two English positions, a business position, science position. Physical education is due to attrition through a retirement, so that one would not be replaced. Social studies is also due to a resignation, so that one will not be replaced. And then the library manager. At the middle school, a full-time physical education and health teacher, .8 family and consumer science, full-time reading, full-time guidance. And at Center Road School, if you recall, looking at the class sizes, this year we had five sections of grade five, and we will be going back to four sections. That was a population we felt needed to have five classes. And so the total of reductions here is just over three-quarters of a million dollars. I do want to say, it was brought to my attention today, that I was quoted in the JIO a week ago indicating that I did not expect any layoffs. And certainly, that is always my hope. Unfortunately, that's not accurate. I do expect that we will have some layoffs. We've only had three retirements. We generally always have other people moving in and out. This is almost 10 positions that we will be eliminating. So I do expect that our numbers are going to be going down. And I apologize if I gave anyone the wrong opinion there. And my, Mr. Huck, our reporter, was doing his job well, and he did not make a mistake. But truly, that is my hope. But I apologize if I gave anyone the wrong impression. We do expect numbers to go down. We are still very hopeful. We don't know where they will be in terms of the people themselves, but the positions are going to be eliminated. And so there will be people laid off from the Vernon Public Schools, unfortunately. There are some additions here as well. I included the Director of Talent Management in this area. Special education paraprofessionals, you can see that's a number. If you recall about three or four years ago, that's about the same number we reduced. And these are all special education paraprofessionals. As I said earlier, our rate is higher than the state, our rate of identification at 14%. And specifically, students with severe disabilities who need a lot of extra support in order to access their education. So our paraprofessionals, who are wonderful, wonderful people, and do a very, very difficult job, often thankless. We do need to increase those ranks. At the high school, if you recall, the teachers' contract eliminated duties for teachers and added a course to teach. So all teachers will be teaching six courses this year. We're very excited about that opportunity for students to get them in classes. But at the same time, we do need people to monitor the cafeteria during lunch and study hall all day long. Mr. Rocket's request here, you can certainly talk to him about it later, but his request is that the study hall monitor is of, is not just sitting and babysitting, but is of a person who has the capacity to assist students and to make sure they're doing the right thing and help them in their studies, monitor them in a different way than just watching over them. Club stipends, there are several new club stipends there as well. Skinner Road School has requested a full-time social worker or psychologist. We put it in as a social worker at this point. We reduced this current year and Skinner Road School, that would also increase Northeast School to a full-time person. They share a person right now. Maple Street School, excuse me, dean of students, I know I've got that in the budget, in the white pages on the wrong line. I have it on an administrator line. It's a teaching position. This year, we are very fortunate to have two teachers who have joined our ranks as resident principals. They are studying to be principals. It was a terrific grant from the state. We were able to supply our quarter of their salary through both our IDEA Grant and our Title I Grant. So we were very, very fortunate to get these two positions. One is at Center Road School, the other is at Maple Street School. And Ms. Trentolo truly believes that we need another person, otherwise, we're not going to be able to improve education. We're concentrating too much on the management side of things. The community school only has one person running the community school, and that limits the number of students because there's really, all the adults who are providing services are volunteers, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, karate. And the community school really needs another adult who is responsible for what's going on at that time. The elementary schools, as you know, Center Road School has two secretaries and full-time secretaries, and the, but the other four elementary schools have no one. And so oftentimes, the library assistant or manager will go in and cover for lunch and that kind of thing. But more than that, we have a lot of difficulty getting records out, making sure that they're put in the right way. There's just so much work to be done. We have provided a little extra assistance by moving secretaries around a little bit, but that leaves other schools wanting for their people back. So those positions are, I left those in the budget. I think that they are well-needed by the four elementary schools. Club stipends, you can see there are different amounts in the five elementary schools for club stipends. They're looking for homework club, among other things, and to provide our elementary students with some activities. And that comes to just about $600,000 of increases in staffing. Benefits is the second of the eight areas. Medical insurance, our original quote was for a 30% increase. We are going out to bid, three different bids. We are hoping that it will, that competition will bring us down to 17%. So this is still a cross-your-fingers number, but 70%. And that's only the increase. That's not the whole amount. That is just the increase. It's huge. Dental, prescription and life insurance, the same thing. We're looking at 17% increase. Medicare, Social Security, just about a 2% increase. That's not quite as bad. Unemployment and workers' compensation, you can see that's an 11% increase. And then our pension, our defined contribution plan and our other post-employment benefits. Those areas have gone up by 32%. At the town, we have many of our, probably most of our employees, at least half of them, are members of the town's pension plan. And the town is changing from a pension plan to a defined benefits contribution. I probably said that wrong. And so as that changes, and we have fewer people in the pension plan, the defined benefits plan is a much more affordable option for us and for the employees. And so right now, we're paying into two different pots to cover those things. Post-employment benefits, that's a fund that we were required to have, I want to say, five or six years ago. I don't know of any board that has done it or town that has done it. If everyone retired at once and took all their benefits, there has to be a pot to cover that liability. It's an unfunded liability. And so we were told that we had to start funding it. We, meaning everyone in the state, not just Vernon. So there is funding in there for that as well. There's not enormous amount, but there is funding for that as well. So that is the largest increase in our budget is the benefits. Professional and technical services, we've used IEP Direct for many years, and we have never budgeted for it, and, which is not responsible, so we certainly needed to do that. We've just been pulling the funding when the bill came from all different areas. And so we put that in specifically. The business office, I put that in as a combined area. That would include our SentryLink, which is our system where we check out volunteers, do background checks on volunteers, as well as, what else was in there?
Time and attendance.
Pardon?
Time and attendance.
Time and attendance, NOVA time. And there was another one that I remembered a few moments ago, and I'm blanking out on that. But there were several areas in the business office that all came together. The data processing center, that is the specific amount that are, amount that we give to the town's, is it Universal Service Fund? For the Vernon Data Processing Center, the VDPC, is up by $119,000. I'm sure that'll be a conversation. Mr. Seagan has said that he would be very happy to come at your third workshop, where we'll be discussing central administration location. The last year, if you recall, it had gone from $450,000 to $850,000, and that was to complete the fiber ring. There is still work to be done. This number is actually much lower than it was. The number also included a generator for backing up our Vernon Data Processing Center, a new phone system for the entire town, which of course includes the Board of Education. Those things have all been removed. And so this is continuing the fiber ring, connecting more areas on that ring, and some software to protect us. We can go through that on that evening, but that's certainly not what we wanted, but I think it's a very expected, knowing what's in there, it's a very expected increase. Property services, our electric has gone up some based on usage as well as rates. And natural gas, we have increased by $438,000. You will see the identical reduction in number-two heating oil on the next page. Other purchase services, we purchase transportation and we purchase services for our students, special ed students and magnet school students. Our transportation, our regular transportation is only going up by just under $20,000. The special education transportation, that's based on our students now and what we expect their needs will be next year, is up by $75,000. Magnet school, we're only suggesting an increase of about $54,000. We think that's prudent. Special education overall, so that is both to local education agencies, other local education agencies, and to schools that specialize in special education, only an increase of $27,000. You know, we had a couple of years where we had difficulty determining what those numbers are. Mrs. Buell and Mr. Procaro worked very hard on this year's numbers, and we are right in the ballpark and doing very well. And so they've been using that same. And so they've been using that same discussion to budget for next year. And then supplies and materials, heating oil, you can see went down commensurate with the increase in natural gas because we moved many of our schools over to natural gas. Diesel fuel, a slight reduction. Supplies and materials, these were the two largest areas. Lexia, which is a core reading program for our students. It's for students who need extra help, Tier Two instruction. And then early childhood, that's our, we hopefully will have 15 classrooms of preschool next year. And that is to cover things that were not covered by the grant. We have five, hopefully, five grants that will be supplying our preschool. We have three right now that supply our preschools. We have been chosen or elected, selected for an expansion grant, which will bring us several more classrooms. And then we are in the process of applying for an additional grant called Smart Start. And a lot of those grants include the price of the teacher, include capital changes if we have a classroom that needs smaller facilities or hot water, things like that. And this is just to ensure that we have food for our students. We are required to provide services, as I said earlier, to any child with special needs who is three or four years old. And as we expand, we also have other students as well. And so this would provide that noonday meal or that snack, would provide classroom materials, anything else that we might need in terms of early childhood. Capital outlay, we have some internal fiber runs that we have to complete, and that would be about $15,000. We have soundproofing in Maple Street School. If you've walked down the hall with children going to and fro, you know that the sound can be very echoey. And so Maple Street School, soundproofing in the hallways. Rockville High School needs a new ice machine. And did that get moved, Mrs. Robideau, do you remember, the ice machine? We had it in one line, and so when you look in the white page detail, it may be in the wrong line, one, just one down. But the capital outlay is $10,000, a little over $10,000. The contingency salary and accrued payroll, $143,000. That includes the administrator's salary, which was, that contract was negotiated. And so we have the amount that's in the negotiated contract there. And any non-affiliated salaries, there's a small amount of funding in there to cover any of those as well. We've come a long way. We have a long way to go, but we are well on our way. You can see our happy students there. We have some graduates. We have a young lady on the bus who is absolutely delighted to be back in school this year. Our middle school chorus is there and some other students. So we are quite delighted to present the budget to you. It's not certainly where I would like it, but it is a good budget and it reflects the needs of our schools. Go to the board. I think we can go to the community forum now and then start our workshop after that. Is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight in regards to our budget? Okay, then we'll move right on to the workshop. Do you have any questions to get us started, Mr. Kemp? I just, the workshop tonight was focusing on the middle school and the high school. So certainly we can answer general questions as well. I know the elementary principals are all here and the middle school principals, and I thank them for their attendance, but I think they were, they're ready to go because they have to come back next week. So certainly they need to leave at this point. The middle school and the high school, if we could have them come up to the microphones, that would be, it would be easier that way. And we can certainly use the two student microphones as well. So I'm sorry to slow down here, but it'll be easier. Are you ready? Mr. Kemp?
If I might, before we begin with the schools, there were, as part of Mary's presentation, there were five, six budget priorities, and I'd like to address that number five. My understanding is the state had placed $10 million for competitive grants to the west. This and Vernon's had applied the $300,000 of the $10 million. It'll be on the same page with that.
Number five, communication?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, okay. I'm sorry, I don't know. Technology, for technology, yes, there was a $10 million pot for technology, correct? Sorry, I thought it was communication.
Well, is that the, is that the $300,000 that you referred to? Because the dollar amount is identical to what I know our application was for.
We have not yet applied for it.
Oh, we are going to.
We're going to apply. We're guessing it will be around $300,000, yes.
Say that again?
We're guessing it will be around $300,000.
Okay, because when you brought that dollar figure up and then said that, your words were, in two weeks, we would have some kind of resolution about that. That came as a surprise, so. Let me, let me just, if I could, let me turn to Mr. Percaro for a second. Michael, the, of the $10 million, Vernon was prepared to apply for $300,000, okay? And I think one of my, the questions I submitted was, when would we expect to hear from the state regarding the outcome of our application for that $300,000?
Right, in May.
Correct, okay, that's what I did understand. And when you referred to $300,000 earlier.
This evening?
Yes.
Okay.
In the communications piece, you referred to $300,000, and that's my confusion. Are we talking about two different?
I think it was in technology. I'm sorry, I don't remember giving a number for communication. Maybe I did. But communication, most of that, the funding for communication, we have found areas in grants and in our licensing act that allows for the board's communication committee to accomplish many of the things that they had set out to do, the communication committee.
Okay.
So I didn't give an, I don't recall giving a number for communication because there is no specific number. I'm sorry.
No, that'd be my fault. Maybe I was mistaken about that. So we're not talking about the state $10 million grant application? Or Vernon's piece of that, are we, here in the communication?
Correct.
All right. So we do anticipate applying, we still anticipate applying for $300,000 in technology funding? And we would expect to hear from the state in about the May timeframe?
That's correct.
Okay. This two-week thing is something entirely different? All right. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen? Could I request that we do a cost center at a time rather than, I know that Jim and Andy are both on the table, and if we did one cost center at a time and then another cost center, it would be, I think it would be even helpful.
Mr. Cross? Well, before we do that, does anyone have any questions that relates to both the middle school and high school? If there are any general questions that we might have?
No.
Do you have Mr. Sample?
Not sure.
I have several questions, a lot of them pertain to the presentation tonight. So for instance, the RHS staff reductions and the BCMS staff reductions. If you're only anticipating a few retirements based on the class size numbers that we were given a few weeks ago, is there any way that we could see a projected revised class size given the proposed cuts in staff?
I would turn to both principals and as they, I don't think students have done their request yet. So it would be in general.
Right, exactly. For us, it would be an arithmetic exercise only. Really, with respect to specific classes, we have to go through our course selection process in the spring to determine which classes and then what the sizes are. So it would just be arithmetic, number of kids divided by number of teachers per department at this stage.
Understood that some of these are core classes like English, so I, you know. I understand it's going to be a guess. It's not going to be, no one's going to hold you to a certain accuracy, but it would be interesting to see, you know, if you're losing to the English teachers, what does that impact look like?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, but again, it would be, as we get to 11th and 12th grade, English, for example, they begin to be able to select electives, so it would become less useful as we progress, but we could certainly go through that exercise.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions that would pertain to both schools? All right, well, which school would you like to start with, BCMS or Rockville? All right, we'll put Jim on the hot seat first.
Will you go on the hot seat first?
Jim.
Two mark, he was one.
One way of looking at it.
All right, is, anybody?
I'm sorry, can I just ask another question to about the presentation itself?
Sure.
Before we get into the specifics. In the district budget priority numbers that you laid out, Dr. Conley, these are all increases to the existing budget.
There is a variety. That's why when I went through the eight accounts, I put the word increase or left the word increase off. So for the all-day kindergarten, yes, those are increases because those are additions to the budget. So those are the full amount of the teachers' salaries that we're moving in. Number two, exactly the same, those are the increases to the budget. The curriculum development, those are, the $48,005 is actually a decrease from the current year, and the $36,005 is exactly what we have in the budget this year. So those are the actuals that are, they're not an increase to the budget, either one. In technology, the five-year replacement plan, we have, that's what we have right now in the budget left. The software licensing and VDPC, that is an increase only to that area. The original amount that we're adding that to is about, is approximately 812 more than that. The full-time director of pupil personnel, I put the salaries there of what they are right now. We have a person budgeted at the $139 in the current budget, so the $130 would be new money. So it is a mixture, I'm sorry.
And, I'm sorry, one more question. The proposed two hundred and six thousand special ed paraprofessionals, so that would be recoverable from the state, correct?
Yes, it would. Not all of it, obviously, but yes.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, are people ready for BCMS? Does anybody have any questions?
Jim, I'm looking at special education personnel. And I see 10 FTEs. How is that, do you have the background to tell me how that compares as your population declines? How that, how the FTEs compare?
Do I only have, and I'll check that out, but I believe I only have nine. I have seven specialized teachers and only have two specialized programs. But I certainly can check that out.
Okay. I'm looking at page 58. Is that any help? And where are your? I'm not looking at where the funding is coming from, just the 10 FTEs.
If you're looking at Cheryl Ryan, for example, if she's there, are you counting the people? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Yep.
She's not here, she's no longer with us. She's no longer at our school.
I'm sorry.
So yeah, that's what I said.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So it's nine.
So it's nine, okay. How does that number compare?
And when you say compared to one, I apologize.
Are that, have those FTEs gone up or down relative to student population?
Those FTEs have gone, I want to say a little bit down. I will tell you, if I can jump into this maybe one way eventually. The special ed, the case management lists have gone down a little bit. I think we were at 1.11 FTEs, 12 FTEs a couple of years ago. Overall, in the last four, five years, we've gone down with the increase of that, the revenue initiative. Close to 14 FTEs. I'd have to go back and check specifically if it had to do with special ed.
No, no, okay, thank you.
And again, those two programs, there's two separate special ed teachers who just work with specialized programs. Those numbers are down. The other seven work with teams. Again, we have nine teams. We do not even have special ed teachers that would be applying or assigned to both, to their own individual teams. They share, so it's not like we even have one per team. So it varies, and there are times where it needs vary depending on who's coming in six, seven names, who might be leaving. There's certainly some case management lists that, you know, are more difficult than others. But I would definitely check on those numbers if you wanted to, but you're looking at seven special ed teachers to most likely cover nine teams.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask a follow-up question on that while we're on special ed? Do you know how, maybe you don't know, but maybe you can find out, how many special ed students you have?
I can find out, but I want to say it's close to eight, but I'd have to find out for sure.
So what is each special, of those seven special ed teachers, what is their case load?
They're roughly between nine and 13, nine or 12. You know, again, you might have an L.I.R.S. 13, they might have some kid who's in for a little bit and leave. And that, roughly. Again, I can find out specifics to that if you do as well.
I'm sorry, Michelle.
No, that's okay. That's where I'm going to focus, Jim, because when we need to reduce the budget by significant dollars, it's always personnel is where it can be focused on dollars. So is there some legislation or that provides for number of students per special educator?
I do not believe that's the case. But again, there is certainly a reasonable list of students that would be on someone's case management list. And I would say that should be right around 10 or 11. I realize that could be higher. But ideally, with the amount of work that you're putting in, with students following IPs, communication, making sure it's being modified, or combinations being followed from the woman, it certainly is an undertaking, so maybe more than that.
Didn't you just tell me you're managing eight?
No, no, I said, I'm sorry. I said they could be as little as nine, and some are doing as much as 12, sometimes 13, it varies. Again, if there's someone who is, we got a new student that comes in from another district who's a special ed student that ends up giving on their case management list, same thing, the student moves out. So sometimes it can vary even during the year.
Do I have any questions for BCMS? Can anybody ask that question for BCMS, Mr. Kemp?
Jim, some of the class size data that you shared with us previously, specifically in tech ed, had six sections and in some cases, only seven students in a section. And I guess one focus would be on the tech ed organization and whether or not it has proven to have as few as seven in a section like that. So what would your comment be about continuing with such a low number?
Well, I think with part of the cuts that I might be recommending, if you're looking specifically Unified Arts, which tech ed is one of those, and I agree when you look at the numbers. And right now, in sixth grade, I want to say you're, you're looking at, overall, there's six sections that are, six rotations. And it averages about 12. And again, that's in all the Unified Arts. In seventh grade, there's five rotations, it's about 14. In eighth grade, there's five rotations, it's about 14. These cuts are going to eliminate the options more or less. And Mrs. Fish, you had asked a question about electives or rotations. With these cuts, in fifth grade and sixth grade, for example, they will only have five options to take. And so automatically, those numbers for Unified Arts will go up to close to. will go up to close to 15, six, 16 a class. And in seventh and eighth grade, you're only gonna have four options. So it's no longer rotations, we're gonna have to look at electives. Automatically with that, you're looking at increasing the class sizes in those areas because you just do not have, you're eliminating B and health, you're eliminating a family consumer science teacher. Guidance position also runs some of the sections, everything from keyboarding on careers class, they help with. So now that's going to eliminate a lot of those sections that have been offered. So to directly answer your question, these positions and these things that we're talking about cutting, is going to directly impact tech ed and those old numbers because if tech ed is offered, it's only maybe one of the few sections offered and the numbers will go up.
If I could, I'd just like to talk about the choice of words that you've used. And when you refer to increasing the sizes.
Yeah.
We have to put it in perspective. 10 years ago, there were 952 students in the building. Now there's 654. So in no way would I be calling this particular change in the count, increasing class sizes because, in fact, we continue to have significantly smaller class sizes than we've ever experienced before, especially at BCMS. So I don't think it's really fair to characterize these changes that I think you should be making as increasing the sizes of the classes. I mean, it's really not, not when you've come from 952 10 years ago.
And I certainly understand that and I'm not trying to sway this in any way. The reality is, those class sizes from what they are now will go up. Again, I understand where it was 10 years ago, I understand where it was four or five years ago. You know, four or five years ago, it might have been 150 or more students than that. But like I pointed out before, we also have lost now what would be 14 or 15 FTEs along the lines. We have not stayed stagnant with that population over there. And I agree with you that, you know, again, I realize, you know, I'm with the district, we're trying to come up with a solution. I am as well. When you're looking at 18 kids in a tech ed classroom, when you're looking at 18 kids, what you might not think that is, you know, definitely going up. There are certain regulations, there are certainly certain safety precautions where it talks about the ideal number of students in some of those classes. It used to be 18, we're not saying it's 18 anymore. There are certain computers, we have computer labs, and we only have 18 working computers, which we have to work on. There's also family consumer science classes and other classes where safety is certainly a concern. And 18, 19, or 20 kids in a class like that is the recommended amount of kids that should be there. So again, I'm not trying to mislead you, I understand very clearly what you're saying, especially with such low numbers in some of the sections. I'm only saying by giving some of these cuts, it'll increase some of those class sizes.
Slightly different subject, has to do with the team concept. Do you recall when you, BCMS organized into the team structure, about how many years ago?
I do not, I've been here for 14 or 15 years and it's always been teams since I've been here. So whether that happened right before this year, I do not know.
Okay, thank you. I guess the next question would be, do you feel that the team structure is an optimal organizational structure, given that you've got 650, I can't remember, in the building?
I mean, the most direct way to answer that is right now, yes. I very much, and my, part of my recommendation is very much to keep the integrity of the schedule and the integrity of the teams right now. I understand, again, we're all looking at the numbers. I am very cautious of, it's at the middle school, because of the team structure, it's kind of like trying to give you a half a quart at times, even if you're looking, you're really looking at giving a whole team. It's very difficult to be one or two of a certain type of teacher. And I will, I will tell you, even some of the core classes, the numbers are smaller. And this is not, it's not trying to be a sales pitch, but I also think this is not the time to be totally looking at getting away from this when we've made some very significant inroads in everything from academic achievement and the way we want to go to perception and making a survival option for students to come here. We've had 25 students return from magnet schools in the last year and a half. It's not a low number, but it's significant enough. When you start looking at these cuts and when you start looking at cutting into also class size numbers and core classes, those students who may be, and parents who are thinking about making this an option again, are gonna be hesitant. With that said, I realize there has to be some compromise and we need to look in some way to cut down what we're spending based on our population. I do not think the teams right now is the way to go. We've tried to have teams before, we had one team working with seventh and eighth grade students. It did not work well. I think Dr. Conley would even speak to that. Doesn't mean we can't try to do this again. But for right now, as the principal of the building, sitting here telling you what my recommendation would be, is to look at reducing in other areas and try to keep the integrity of the teams at this point. Our class sizes in sixth grade are smaller with the core classes. Seventh and eighth grade, we're about 17 to 18. And eighth grade, a little bit higher because there's something contractually where our eighth grade teachers, some of our facilities and department heads can only teach three sections of certain classes. So it's not indicative of times, at times of what case load or class load they can have. But again, I'm not trying to dance around some of these things. My answer to you would be, this would not be the time for me, from an educational standpoint, to cut back on those teams. Thank you.
Anybody else? I just want to answer David's question, when the team started? I believe it was around 1995, 96. My son uses a career. That was the first year they had all three classes. They used to have teams in just sixth grade. And then in 95, 96, they made teams in all three grade levels. So that was just to answer your question. Anybody else have any questions, Ms. Harrison? Sorry? I do, but you can go first and I'll come to you.
Jim, I'm not questioning downward now, I'm trying to understand a budgeted item, that's all.
Please.
Okay. It's 55999, proctoring off-site testing.
Yes.
Just tell me what that is.
What's happening in the past, whenever we've had students who are all responsible, whether they're temporarily in teams somewhere, we're still responsible to test them. So we have to send somebody to go and do that testing. That's what we've done in the past. To be honest with you, I think last year, that wasn't what we had to spend, the year before, we had to spend more than we put in there. So that's a nip right now. But that's the case. If we had to go off-site to test someone who falls on our role, we have to do that. We have to provide that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, my turn. I, we did that, I asked if you could function with just one family and consumer science teacher and you basically answered that and just be sending off electives.
Yeah, I wanted to just elaborate on that. What I think we would probably wind up doing with those cases is, say, offer as many as we could to incoming sixth graders and if someone shows an aptitude or interest or for whatever reason, we can make some selections and have them become more of an elective. We could still offer a section or two in seventh or eighth grade. But certainly, we wouldn't be able to offer it to everyone like we're doing now. And that would be the case with other ones. I think we try to offer as many to incoming for reasons why, if you're attracted from the middle school, and then somehow look to just base it on whether it's aptitude, interest, combination of both of the numbers.
Well, currently, you have one business ed teacher. How does that work?
No, we have right now three, we have what would be 1.2, we have three tech ed computer teachers.
I'm sorry, I meant business education.
Yeah. Well, Terry, one of the business ed teachers also teaches some computer. So there's a combination of three people in tech ed and business for, so.
Okay. And I assume from what you've said before, that you are hoping to have nine teams again next year?
I am hoping to have nine teams again next year.
Could you tell me how many students are in each grade level? I don't have that in front of me. Can I know sixth grade, seventh grade?
Roughly, I want, I can give you that and I can give you specifics, but I think we have, say, 210 to 215 at each grade level.
Thank you. And, let's see, I know, as I'm looking through this budget, on several disciplines where they say there's a reduction in staff, which would be, let's see, it's language arts, math, science, and social studies. There is no dollar amount showing savings in that. Is there a reason for that?
That was not my recommendation.
If I may ask Mrs. Revie, was that last year's reduction?
Yeah, there, he didn't have any reductions, I don't believe.
In those core areas, those were last year's, so they were left over from last year. So there is no reduction in math, language arts?
Correct.
Oh, those are at the high school.
I think what happened was originally, we were talking about it in that line, it was in the budget document.
Okay.
And it was left as a placeholder.
Oh, that was correct. I, I would say the central office did cut a team from the middle school.
Yeah.
And in our budget deliberations, so that's, it wasn't last year, it was this year's.
Yes.
So in our budget deliberations, we added that one team back in. Oh, okay. That makes sense, thank you. Let's see. And so now you are gonna be reducing guidance counselor though, is that correct?
Correct.
Really, basically, a point five? Yes?
It's a one, it's a full-time. The position was there in the fall, actually, in August, it was in our budget and it wound up being split between two positions. And we had only what was now to be a halftime. Now it lives in that as well. The person who was doing that position wound up doing half and was taken in August. So it was in our budget.
Right, right. But right currently, this year, you have, how many guidance counselors?
Three and a half.
Three and a half, so next year, you'll be one, two, three.
Correct. But starting at the beginning of this year, we ended up at four.
Okay.
The same thing happened last year. That's why I wanted to mention that half becomes significant. Because for us, it was, we started out here with four and we will have, next year, we will have three.
Right, okay. And now, I am, this is just technical explanation on 51159. I just want to know what, I know it's summer labor, but what's process POS?
What happens, the purchase orders that are processed as they're coming in throughout the summer? But it's also, we have given the task that custodian and maintenance has, there are some teachers who come in and completely do all of the lockers, they change all the lockers, they do all the maintenance on them. They go from top to bottom throughout the building, as well as do all the purchase orders, as well as making sure they're accurate. Initiative, especially now that all essential supply and everything is on the building. They've also taken that undertaking on as well. That's why there's a non-qualm in that because essential supply is becoming a little bit more of a burden.
I just wanted to know what POS meant, I was sorry. Was that? And then my last question is, item 55500, which is for printing and binding, I believe. It's not a significant increase, but with the, having significantly less students, I'm just wondering why it didn't go down instead of that.
You know, and it probably could go down. I mean, please keep in mind, not only is it the second year of doing this, but also last year, we were looking at it, that discussion from John, but what that is, is not only the planners that are right, you know, he is heading plans, but we used to be able to send up our teacher handbooks, student handbooks, substitute handbooks, everything up to central office. And a lot of that would be copied and, you know, they would do that. We now have to send that out. We no longer have that option to come up here. So that in itself has created an increase in that cohort. So we used to be able to get away with doing some of it. We can't do as much, we send it out. So you're looking at, not only the planners, that amount in a way of student parent handbooks with extras, teacher handbooks that are updated every year, sub-handbooks. There's other things that we're also printing off, but you may be accurate, I might be able to do something with that, but it's not, you're right, it's gone down because of some reasons, but also the burden on that budget item and that line item is also increased based on what we have to put out.
I don't know if you know the answer, maybe Dr. Conley does. Why do we have to send it out as opposed to doing that?
I was not aware we were sending it out. I think Mr. Harrison was referring to, I would say, probably four years ago, there was a person who worked, that their job was printing in central office. And so you could send your job here. And so we eliminated that position and pushed it back. So in reality, the district is saving money by having the schools print their own faculty handbooks, et cetera. So I was not aware that we were actually sending it out to be printed. I thought we were using our own machines.
So you're saying the school could be printing it out instead of sending it out?
Well, I'm not sure if they have the capacity in the summer to do all of that work. Maybe that's where Mr. Harrison was coming from. Is that the case?
That's, that's an option to do that. At times that it's, you're looking at not only printer and manpower, toner, all those other things. So it all adds up, of course. So again, those are things, you're absolutely right. And looking at that number, it's something I can look at, do that. It wasn't just based on the planner.
Right. No, I figured that, but I wasn't sure. All right, that's all I have. Does anybody have anything, Mr. Conley?
Jim, the two facilities related questions. One has to do with the ad hoc committee's work that found that there's some question about the dividers and whether or not they are useful to you. And that was an open-ended item that was left that the maintenance people could remove them if requested. And that's as far as I know that that investigation went. So what's your opinion as to the condition or need for the dividers at this point?
The dividers in the gymnasium?
Yes.
We have, we don't actually have, if I can, if I'm recalling this correctly, the ones in the small gym are not used very often, I would think. They're not in the best condition. And then the one in the large gym, we have a net that comes across. It's no longer even a divider. So I certainly can check that out. Mrs. Dr. Pessell, Mr. Bruce, and I were supposed to do a walk-through of all of the facility last week, but it held up. So we'll be doing that in the next couple of days. I forget my answer. But I have not heard that the dividers are causing any problems. Sometimes those dividers come up, you can't close it, you can't do anything. I don't see them closed very often. The only divider we use, you know, for a decent amount, is the divider at times that closes the auditorium to the cafeteria. We often open that up, we have larger groups there, and that's old as well, but it's still functioning. So I can certainly check that out, but I don't have a certain answer for you as to what condition they are in.
All right, because I didn't see anything in the budget that had any potential.
I didn't figure anything out.
Okay. And also another question regarding the mats. What's the latest on that?
I know Lois was down there again last week, she was measuring, Dr. Pessell, I'm sorry, was down there measuring and as well as get costs. I think we were, it was gonna be an update, maybe I don't know, 27, I believe?
Twice six.
Twenty-six. So there'll be an update, I'm at it that way.
You are correct, twice out.
Twenty-seven. I got one right.
Thank you.
Jim, I don't know if I'm remembering right. You're taking, you now have two secretaries, is that right? Next year, you'll have two secretaries. Did you take a hit last year?
Yes.
So you had four.
Yes.
You went to three. This year, you're going to two.
One in God and two in the Mayan office.
Okay.
Yes, last year, we had four.
Right. I see the high school has six. And I'm just wondering about, do you want, do you want to comment on going to two secretaries?
No, I want to make sure that that's accurate too, because I happen to notice there was one person who seemed to be in both places.
Well, Naiyan was in and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was a watch. But do you want to comment on reducing one more secretary?
So this year, they have two, and next year, it's two because.
Yeah, I'm not looking to.
My Ann's not there.
Yeah, she's not there.
I understand.
So I still am not looking to.
There's no new reduction.
Yeah, I don't think there was a reduction in that area.
It does show we have two, for this one. But like, if you look at the column for 1450 this year, their free salary.
Correct.
But the top salary, Naiyan's salary, she's not there, she's at the high school.
I understand, so she's not there.
But she's not there, so there are only two secretaries there right now.
Reduction was the 33. That was before we identified who was going to be moved. That was the question for the current year that we did last spring, or worked out last spring. So there are two secretaries in the Mayan office this year and next year.
Does that make sense?
I believe what you're telling me, when I read the columns, it looks like there are three this year because Naiyan's salary is there.
Right, but when it says reduction at 1.0, that's reducing her salary. And the dollars aren't the same, but that is taking her salary out of this year's budget. The dollars aren't the same, but that is taking her salary out of this year's budget, because it was moved to the high school.
There were still nine to two, Jim. How's that one for you?
Two's okay.
Yeah?
Well, no, I mean, no more than two.
Tony.
Can we go back to the padding?
To the padding?
To the padding, Jim. I guess I was, you said Dr. Pessell would be looking at it.
Correct, she was down last week with the tape measure.
Are we using them now?
There's, we have pads on the wall. In many opinions, it doesn't suffice, it doesn't cover a large enough area. I know the last time I was invited to come to the committee meeting, there was a discussion on what was needed, what was required, and how we need to go back in. So, I think there was a desire to just get some measurements, and then some costs, and a final decision. And that's in the process, and will be finalized, or if not finalized, recommended the next time we have a committee meeting, which is on the 27th.
Are we using them now?
Yes. But we're only using, to answer your question, it's only, when you are at either end in the gymnasium or underneath the basket, I think there's only three mats. In reality, people are saying, in order to cover the required area, you probably need close to, say, eight mats, or at least six, and that's what we're in the process of doing. Their mats are up right now to prevent anyone who's right under the basket to do that. But there's a question of whether they're the right mat, whether they're, you know, the required mat, and again, we have none. I think that's accurate.
Correct. That'd be out of bounds, like, for volleyball or basketball. That's pretty much where those mats end. They need to extend left and right, get closer towards the, where the wall meets the corners, where the doors are. Needs to be extended. There are mats there now.
I'm going to come with this. If, if the study shows that maybe we need them now, I don't understand why it's going to be put in the budget for next year, not now, this, this year.
They're not in here, are they?
No, it's not.
That's what you're saying. You're saying we want to pick where it is this year's budget?
Well, if we need it.
That's my assumption, is that that's what's going to happen this year, is that correct?
No, this has been next year's.
And forgive me again, I'm looking for some help over here. When I was invited to that committee meeting, there was a question of what we needed, and I was invited to give my opinion. I'm not sure where the funds were going to come, I didn't realize, but thank you, that was the building investment. Is that accurate?
That was my understanding. Those are something we identified when we did a walk through two months ago now. And what we were waiting for, from Dr. Pessell, was a measurement for adding to those mats, so we can attach them to the wall, so that's what we were waiting on. To be honest with you, I didn't know what the true cost is, so, that's still up in the air. We're really waiting on Dr. Pessell for that.
And you said this would be next month?
I'm thinking that we're going to meet again, you know?
Are we meeting next, next week?
Yeah, the 27th of this month, to at least get the specifics as far as costs and requirements.
And then, Dr. Pessell has to see if she has the money in this year's budget to do it. If she doesn't, then it might be added into next year's budget.
Well, why if we need to, you know, make some changes, if it's a safety reason, if, that we can add it in the budget this year?
That's what we're investigating right now. She's investigating the price and all of that, and seeing what is in the athletic department budget that she could purchase them this year. In fact, the entire list, I think, and I've forgotten with whom I spoke, but it was, many, many of those things are already completed or well in process and on the road to being fixed without putting them in the budget.
Yeah, it also had to do with patches in middle school and the high school.
I know.
So, they're prioritizing and doing that, and I think they moved on to the middle school, so now, we're looking to see what we can do on our own, and what we have to do outside.
So, someone will come back to us and tell us that he's satisfied with whatever the results are, whatever he did. Yes?
Can you even talk to us at one point about the disc golf course up on Eckers Hill? And the parking that they may be, or are needing at this point in time? And it's not clear to me where they're currently parking. Are they parking in the school parking area? Or are they parking up on Eckers Hill? Or what is the issue there to the rest of your understanding right now?
I think they're doing both. Some are driving up and parking up there. What I had mentioned is, when we have some of our sporting events, so you have cross-country soccer going on at the same time, you now have that option for people, and they're driving their car up the hill to go up, to park up there, and they're driving, where kids are now running down, and they're parking and driving where there's a game. And so, just the sheer volume of cars in that small area is also affecting where they can park and where they can park safely. So, more and more, they have to almost parallel park around the hill. I had mentioned moving forward, I think we should do something where there's a gate, so they can't go further up that hill, and that they have to park either in one of our parking lots in front of the building, whether that's parents for the game or those people, or designate some of the area. But right now, it's kind of open, so they didn't, they get up there and get a spot, they're driving up there, it's, kids are running down there, of course, you know, of course, during a meet.
In either location there, parking then somewhere on the school property, so to speak?
Yes.
There's no ability to park up in Eckers, like when they were planting their victory gardens, they would go up and park up there.
Some of them are still trying to get up there, you don't have the volume of that. Some of them are still trying to get up there to park, because they no longer have spots in that gravel parking lot. So, when the sheer volume of people at our events, if they can't find something lower, they're just driving up closer to where they're going to go. And I don't know what the parking lot is like even further up there, but I'm only saying, they're actually parking right along where those gardens are on days where we have events, because they don't have enough spots down in that gravel parking lot. So, I had flagged it as just something that would have to be addressed at some point. In the fall is when it seemed like it was a major issue with soccer and cross-country happening at the same time. So, you have, you know, West Road, people pulling in, not being able to park, and then you have people driving up to take advantage of the new course, so it just adds to the congestion.
Well, in your conversations with Bruce Denny coordinating all of what's going on there, are you aware of whether or not he's got any plans to request for parking capability up on the town side of, let's say, the line?
I do not, but I certainly can check that out. And we've taken steps in the past as a school for some of our events to assign staff and to do things, because it's pretty much been our events. When we head into those type of events up on that hill, you know, yes, I'll have to reach out to Park and Rec and see if there are any plans for them to designate areas, so we know that that's happening. Even if it's giving them a schedule, there's certain days they know that things have to be blocked off. I don't know what the solution is, but I can check that out.
Mr. Harrison, isn't there a gate right now near the scoreboard for that lower softball field that goes?
I believe so, but again, forgive me, I don't think it's always up. So, when you're looking at, there's a lot of activity, there's a lot of activity, I don't know, you know that.
And you also mentioned, we met a couple of weeks ago, that someone drove across the soccer fields to get up to that. Now, was that a question of either the town or us, P O E, putting up bollards on that area to keep the cars off, physically off the fields?
I would like to think it was a rare exception, that somebody was just doing something that they felt would be amusing at that point, cutting across the grass. It didn't have anything to do with wanting to wait or needing to wait, it just, I think it could have happened at any time of day and night. But I don't see it happening frequently, it just was very obvious based on the tracks, because the grass was so soft.
Any other questions for Mr. Harrison?
Can I ask Mr. Carrow? I don't know if you know, Jim. I'm wondering if, when different groups apply for a building use permit, and there's a charge attached to that, where does that go to? Where is it reflected, and then how is it? Where does it go in and how does it go out?
Through the chair, those funds go into the school use account. It's not reflected in the budget, because those funds directly offset overtime charges for our custodial staff to staff those events, for the most part. That's how those funds are used. The year, past couple of years, we've also used those funds to replace any broken items and some consumables. For example, at the high school, there's filters in the lights, so when the auditorium is used, and the filters need to be replaced on a regular basis, instead of dipping into our operational funds, we take those, we take funds out of our school use account to replace those items.
Is there a line item for school use account?
No, through the chair, not in our operational budget.
So, it's not kept by school, it just goes to one place and goes out from one place. Okay.
The funds are managed, and the accounts are managed, the account is managed on a central office.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on the middle school for tonight? If we have any further questions on the middle school, I'm sure we can email you.
Absolutely, I'd be glad to come back, and I'll leave you the information on special ed, because I know there's some specifics that I'm concerned that you have information on.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Rocket, are you ready?
Yes.
Would you like to start the high school? Do you have any questions for Mr. Rocket? Everybody? Andy, Mr. Rocket, I want to ask you...
Andy's what I...
Sorry. I want to ask the same question about special ed personnel.
Yes.
How many students in your... Twelve FTEs?
Right, so, so list twelve FTEs, and I'm sure you know that some of those are assigned to programmatic positions. For example, if you take the twelve, and you take out the TAO program, oh, that's three. The ASEP program, two more. The ABL program, one more. And the NEXTEP program, that's seven of those teachers assigned to, or essentially specialized program, leaving five true special ed teachers. I don't know the exact number, we can certainly get that, that you have tomorrow, but typically around 12 percent. You could do the numbers. If you just carry that up to an arithmetic caseload, it'd be about 20 per teacher. I think our effective caseload for the high school teachers is 16 or 17 that each case manager is visible.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions? Call you back this week, I don't remember. Mr. Stansfield?
The, once again, it looks like we're dealing with the library and assistant server. I'm curious about the proposed cut there, especially given last year's budgets and that, when we all pretty much said we didn't want to do that. So, where is that reflected in the list of reductions that you've provided? Library manager, is that the position that's specifically being cut?
That's correct.
So, what is the, the actual FTE reduction that would occur?
There would be one less position at the high school library. There is a certified person there, and then there is a manager and assistant.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Andy, what is, what's your plan for that study hall monitor that is going to do more than just babysitting?
Right, so, so, we're modulating that position off our current in-school suspension supervisor. That person, we pay a little more for than a typical non-skilled person who sits in a room and takes attendance when people go, and makes sure that everybody follows the rules, et cetera. That person does an outstanding job for us, because they're more capable and we pay them more. They're involved in coordination with teachers, working with kids while they're there, communicating with administrators, and that's an expectation of that position, not just that we have a great individual there. And so, with respect to the study halls, when we have a teacher monitoring that, the teacher already has certain skills. It would be not only, I think, a disaster if we got an unskilled person in to monitor a study hall, our own study hall, but would be a tremendously lost opportunity for us. Because what I want to turn that into is something more like, what are you doing? Do you have any homework outstanding? Okay, let me just email your teachers, that kind of stuff. Someone who is actively involved in the educational process. The context for all that is really teacher loss of duties. Part of the general management is that we need to get everybody more involved in students, especially using the teacher's ability to do that. So, I want, I want a skilled person in that position to really take charge and maximize the opportunities to study hall.
Anyone else? Mr. Stansfield?
I realize it's a small number, but I'm just curious, are we seeing an increase in the number of clubs and after-school activities? I've noticed both U M B C M S have an increase in the club stipend line item, so I was just curious about that.
Sure, so, it's really two-part thing. One, as a general matter, I think, as Dr. Conway reported in her overall presentation, clubs and after-school activities are a way to attract kids to school. In our generation, with all the electronic options available to them, we want them attracted to the school. So, that again is the context. Specifically, we have probably a dozen such after-school programs that are functioning now, have been functioning for some time, and have established a track record. This is a reflection of that. The programs I put down there, with the exception of one, are all in place and have been operating. And it was, it's really an inequity that we see value in these, we want them to continue, but then we say, well, you know, I mean, we really need as a matter of equity to give these teachers a stipend. It, I think everybody knows that really, that stipend does not pay that teacher for their time. It's merely a recognition that what you're doing is above and beyond and has value. So, that's really the general basis. The one position that does not, is not currently up and running is the Home Builders Association program I want to bring into the high school. We have someone who's, as I might have mentioned previously, nationally competitive in that area, bodybuilder and an tech ed teacher, and I want to get her up and running to get our kids into that national competition.
Can I have a follow-up question on Mr. Stansfield? I noticed that you have the animal control, the animal care advisor.
Right.
He's never been paid for that?
No, no, and that, that, you know, it's a certain individual this year, it's been other individuals in the past. That's a 24, 7, 365 position.
I was surprised to see that there was...
Right. Again, these things are just a matter of equity.
Okay, Mr. Stansfield, do you have any other questions?
Yes, I had a similar question as I did with regard to the dividers. What, in your opinion, is the condition or need for any removal or continued maintenance, continually maintaining the dividers that you have in the gym?
So, interesting question. They are not being used now, because I don't think they're functional. And I don't think they're at the point where their current safety risk, although there's some strapping, hanging issues, such that they're high on our priority. Would dividers give us a little bit extra flexibility in terms of the gym? Sure. Can we use the current dividers we have? No. So, they're very appropriately a topic of the ad hoc committee's concern.
All right, so we got something there that doesn't work, or how they got that way, but that's the way it is?
Yeah.
Okay. At one point in time, I asked you about the particular structure of the block, and you deferred that to a later time. Are you at that time?
We, we're in the base performing that committee, we have some, we have, we have co-chairs at the high school, our department chairs, our science department chair, Elizabeth Bar, and our tech ed department chair, Brian Wright, who are co-headings of a committee to examine whether our current structure meets our academic goals and needs. I certainly do not anticipate any examination or recommendation or change for implementation next September. The committee knows this. We're going to do it right, it's probably a six-month process to look at it, and then, our goal is to develop some kind of recommendation in November, in time for you to appropriately consider it for the next... consider it for the next year. So, the short answer is yes. But also, I never liked the short answer, so.
Well, all right. Part B, really, with regard to your organization, you, although not as severe as V C M S, you've come from 300 kids more than you had 10 years ago, and how you intend to organize accordingly, that's really the question we have.
I don't quite understand the question. Are you asking if I intend to institute teams or things like that?
Well, you have, you have 300 fewer kids.
Right.
You're roughly right, 900 or so.
Right.
And you have class sizes that aren't what they used to be.
Uh huh.
So, I guess we're concerned about those situations where you have sections, let's say, that have student numbers that are significantly low, and how you're, how you're managing to that.
Right, all right. So, the budget that you have before you, I think the proposed budget from Dr. Conway reflects that reality. As you know, when you, when you look at a class size, it's never an arithmetic number, I mean, never. You can do something like, set an ideal class size, and I'll pick 20 for a general academic class, you might want to adjust that up or down, depending on the type of class and the type of program you might want to run. You would adjust it up for a gym class, for example, you could handle more kids, you might get two teachers handling 50 or 60 kids, for example. You might have something like a cooking class that has 14 stations at, where you would adjust it down to meet that. You might adjust it down for science classes for safety reasons. The next is programmatic decisions you've made. The classic programmatic decisions are AP programs, and the programmatic decision I've been faced with every year, I've been a principal at both schools, is AP chemistry. When you get a few number of kids, and almost always do, you have to ask yourself, do I want to run this program, use a valuable resource, say 20 percent of a teacher's time for five kids, or eight, or three kids? And then, you have to answer that in the context of, what do I want my high school to represent? And I, that's how I make my decisions. So, some of the, some of the problem you expressed will never go away. That's part one. Part two is, we never know, and this goes back to the question Mr. Stansel asked me earlier, really what courses we're going to offer, and so what the exact class size structure is going to be. Because, you know, we've developed all these new courses and new approaches for kids, we don't know what will attract them. This past year, we made the decision to run some classes that had some very low numbers, because it was their first year, and we wanted the opportunity to try and build them. I'll point to one of our C C E courses, combined music art program, for example. Some of our cooking classes, low numbers. We made the decision to invest in those, because we considered it more an investment than just that particular class. I don't know that we'll have the opportunity to do that next year, given budget reality. So, so I'm not trying to dodge the question, I think it's just too early to tell. But very clearly, we're taking a big hit at the high school in terms of staff reductions. That's 7.6 positions we have before you, with the three latched here, that's 10.6 bodies in two years.
Anything else, Mr. Kemp?
No, thank you.
Mr. Stansel.
I think it would be interesting if, if it's really possible to determine, you know, we've got the numbers for the reduction in students over the last 10 years, and Mr. Kemp, I believe, has been referencing those, but I would be curious to see what the staff FTE numbers look like over the corresponding 10 years. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything for Mr. Rocket? Andy, because we get so much information, it just, I use this as a chance just to educate myself, so I'm just looking for some definitions. Policy coverage for graduation?
Probably a miscreant police coverage?
No, a misread, my bad. And there is the, there's a new state mandate for EpiPen training?
Right.
And it's in two places in the budget at the high school? Do you know why?
No, no, it could very well be an error, I took that right from Peggy Stickle, who came to me and said, hey, we have a new mandate, put it in the budget, so I said, I'll put it in the budget.
It's under pupil services, and then it's under other professional or technical, okay. Okay.
Was that the $100 item, was I wrong?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I'm sorry, go ahead, done.
When Mrs. Mrs. Arms mentioned the EpiPen, how do you, how do you handle it? The EpiPens with the students?
Right, our, our director of nursing, Peggy Stickle, she's the one that's going to set that up for us, right now, you know, I'm not authorized to do that, right now that's just our medical personnel, but I think the new reg calls for training for other personnel in the school to be able to do so, like administrators, future personnel, et cetera.
Thank you.
Mr. Kemp?
The generator that was cut, I take it that was for placement at the high school? Would that be correct? Maybe it wasn't. Or maybe Mr. Procaro could ask that. Where was the generator going to go?
The generator was to power our Vernon data processing center. All of the servers and all that. That was what was cut from the Vernon data processing center budget that we share.
As a backup?
No, we don't have generators, can I correct?
Through the chair, there's currently a backup generator there, this would upgrade it to meet a higher operational need. Be more, it would be a more automated process. And if I may, through Chair as well, the EpiPen line items to SRN, they're located in two separate line items, one for training, to pay for the trainer to come in, and the other one is for supplies, to actually purchase the supplies. And under the new mandate, you'll see an increase, because there's an increased number of EpiPens that we need to purchase, two and two adults and for pediatric, and the cost of them have gone way up since vendors have realized that there's a new mandate.
Follow-up on the generator thing. The generator at V C M S, what was the source of funding? I don't recall. For the generator at V C M S?
Through you, Madam Chair, the source of that funding was a grant offered by federal homeland security, passed through state and homeland security. And at this point in time, we did explore possibilities of looking at other grant funding in that area, but there is no grant funding at this time available through state or federal homeland security to support the purchase of a generator at that capacity.
To support the data, okay. At this time. All right.
Do we have any questions?
Mr. Rocket, can you give us some background on the ice machine in the athletic room? When we did our walkthrough a couple of months ago, we were looking at the old ice machine, can you give the group some background of why we're looking to get a new ice machine for athletics?
I, again, I think Lois could probably give us the specifics, but I think it's a matter of not only function, but also sanitation. I think that was the real big issue, I think it was like, oh my god, you know, one of those things, so. But again, if you want specifics, I can get them to you. I'll put that on my follow-up list, unless we want Lois up here now.
Yeah, it just doesn't produce enough ice. I literally have to, and we've had it checked a ton of times. And they come, and they get it running, and it does run, but then it shuts off, and it runs, and it shuts off. I literally go in, every time I enter the high school, I go in, unplug it and plug it back in, to try to get it to produce enough ice just to get us through the daily injuries we may have. So, we, it, we can hang on with it, but the reality is, it is not functioning well this time.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Rocket? Okay, I'm going to ask my questions then. Looking at this budget, it appears that there's a reduction in staff in the social studies department, but it doesn't say there's a reduction, but one teacher does not have a salary next to his.
Right, that, that is a reduction, we, that reduction actually has been made this year. You know, one of our staff members left to assume a position outside of teaching, and we have not replaced that position for this year.
So, is that position being filled with a substitute right now, or?
Well, through the remainder of the semester, spot finals begin tomorrow, and then we're reshuffling courses internally, a letter just went out to parents a couple of days ago on that particular thing. We're combining a couple smaller sections, we're reshuffling teacher assignments to accommodate that loss.
Would you want to add anything? And we are going to be, you are suggesting a reduction in your physical education, in future physical education, and can you still function with five?
Yes, it's going to be frankly tight, it'll result in obviously increased gym sizes, but also, loss of, we anticipate loss of our ability to provide some of the electives that we've been developing over the last several years. So, with the state requirement to teach health, and so many sections of phys ed, it may be, or will be, that's just about all we can do. We think a couple of sections of electives, but tremendously reduced.
And I noticed there's money in there for ninth graders to take the PSATs?
Yes.
I know we've paid for 10th graders in the past, why are we, what's your logic for adding ninth graders?
So, a couple of things. One, part of our reasoning is, this is really the tertiary reason, is the statewide discussion about potentially using PSAT and SAT as the statewide standardized test. We happen to really like the SAT and PSAT specifically, because it's very specific data about students. We love the fact that we have, in all cases, PSAT, and in some cases, SAT information, because now for certain kids, we have two years of specific data. What we want to do is to start testing the ninth graders with the PSAT, which would give us fabulous longitudinal data to measure not only how Andy's doing, and whether he's progressing in these specific areas, but how the entire school is doing in these areas. So, that's a big one for us.
Thank you, I'd like to add to that. The PSAT and SAT are being revised, and next fall, the first revisions will be out. The PSAT 8, 9, for grades eight and nine, will be in next fall, and the PSAT that we usually give to our 10th graders will also be out, and to some of our 11th graders. The regular SAT, the new one, will be out in March of 2016, so just a little over a year from now. The assessment is vastly different than it was. The questions are aligned standards. The questions will also involve science and social studies within the context of the reading, writing portion, and the mathematics portion. And so, students will receive over 25 different scores, including a science score, a social studies score. It just, it's absolutely fascinating. I happened to be with the state this morning and got information on it, which is why I wanted to share it with you. It's, it's something like we've never seen before. Interestingly, the college board has partnered with Khan Academy, and Khan Academy will be developing all of the prep classes, and they are going to be free to all students. So, it's going to put some businesses out of business, but, but this is online, it's supposed to be absolutely stellar, and that is supposed to actually come out this May. But the test is going to look vastly different, we saw a couple of items, and it's much more aligned to our S VAC, and our, the other assessments that we're doing, so they will be standards. The three assessments are also aligned, they are not right now. The PSAT is aligned with the SAT, but the grade eight test, which is, I think called ready, ready step, is, is not aligned, and so you can't see growth over time. And the three assessments will be completely aligned, the scales will be completely aligned, and so while the SAT has a scale of 200 to 800 on a particular test, the PSAT will have, and I'll have the numbers wrong, but let's say 150 to 750, and the PSAT 8, 9 will have a scale of 100 to 700. And so you'll be able to see exactly where you are, and where you might perform on one of the others, because if it's a 500 on one, it would be a 500 on the other. So, it's, it's absolutely fascinating, the work, I was not aware of how far they've come, I knew what was going to be, guys, but it's, it's absolutely fascinating, so. It's going to be a good thing, so it is a very different test that Mr. Rocket is talking about.
And my next question is in regards to our, our student activities director?
Yes.
I, there, I noticed there are two salaries, one for the students' activities director, and one for student activities account manager.
Right.
Are they the same person, are they two people, or could one person do both jobs?
It's two separate functions. In theory, you could have one person do both jobs, but I could not reasonably, you know, expect less compensation for that. One is, is way more demanding and has more responsibility, obviously, the money one, so, right now, it's two separate ones, I don't, I would never make it a practice to combine, it's really entirely different.
And my last question is, I don't know if it's going more for Dr. Pacel, but I just wanted to know how many students in the high school are participating in intrascholastic sports, and is that an increase or a decrease from last year or the previous year? And I don't expect an answer tonight, if you don't have the numbers for that.
Yeah, I, I can, probably, if I'm going to be exact, I, I should get them to you.
Okay.
I could give you ballpark, so we're up a little in some, and down a little in some, but, yeah, I can give you those specifics.
Okay, that one, great, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Anybody have any other questions we're interested to discuss tonight? All right, our next meeting is next Wednesday, and we will be doing all the elementary schools that night, is that correct?
That is correct. If I could review the questions that we are going to respond to for next time. I know Mrs. Fisher has sent us a list of questions, if any of you have questions that you have before next Wednesday, that would be wonderful, to help us prepare. In this evening's discussion, we have, Mr. Stansel asked for the new class sizes that include the cuts. We are going to look into the padding, Dr. Pacel will give us an answer on that. Our staffing over the last FTE, over the last 10 years, and we do have that information. And then, how many students are in the intrascholastic sports? So those were the four, did I miss any others? And please, if there are more questions, you can send them, and we will get to them at the end of the show.
Thank you very much, see you all Wednesday.